Mayor, are we, are we ready?
All right, we, we are ready, but Councilman Harper.
Okay.
Seems to have to, all right. Welcome tonight. I call the order of the City Council, the Fayette Municipal District Development District Number One Board of Directors and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Join meeting to order at, on April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at five forty-five P. M. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum for the City Council?
Yes, Mayor, we do.
All right.
And so the next item will be one B, which is the Fayette MDD, the call to order and confirm a quorum.
I call the Fayette Municipal District Number One Board of Directors to order. Do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir, we do. Next will be item two, executive session.
Hey, Vicki, just a second real quick.
Okay.
So for the City Council, with your permission, I'm going to take item twelve and item thirteen and move it after seven C. So that way, we have public comment, we have all the City Council and MDD action items in one place. Then we can go to the Parks and Recreation Design stuff, and then we'll, then we can go into, as you said, after that. So it's gonna just be one big section for Council. So we roll right through. Any objections from Council? We move twelve and thirteen under seven C, after seven C. Seeing that, Vicki, we good with that?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go into executive session, closed meeting, in accordance with Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero-eight-seven, to discuss or deliberate regarding economic development negotiations, one, Project Cactus. And this is MDD and Council.
Okay, I take the City Council and the MDD into executive session at five forty-seven. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. When Vicki's ready. When Vicki's ready. Oh. Hey Vicki. Vicki. I don't want to. Hey, everyone. Will I get started again, please? Thank you so much. Everybody, please. All right. I'll take us out of executive session with the City Council and MDD at 6:07. Madam Secretary, what is next?
Okay. No action will be taken on that executive session. Action for executive session will take place later in the agenda for items 7A, B, and C. So we will move to Agenda Item 4. Implication Given by Christopher Ash with the Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the American and Texas Flags.
Please rise.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for this magnificent land to live in, the freedoms that we enjoy, the special blessings that we have by being here and being Americans. We're grateful for this beautiful town. We're grateful for the leaders that we have here, and we pray blessings upon them and their families. Please guide them and direct them to make good choices and to bring continued blessings to the other citizens of this town. We pray for our police and first responders. We pray for our teachers. And as we enter into this holy week and with our eyes fixed upon Easter and that glorious event, we pray that our hearts and minds can be focused on our Savior Jesus Christ and all that has been done for us. And we pray these things now in His sacred name, the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible, and one less Texas.
Next, please.
Okay. Next is Agenda Item 5A, Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month Proclamation.
All right. We are honored tonight to have the Children's Advocacy Center from Rockwall County, Empower, Lone Star Casa, Rockwall County Department of Family Protective Services, and the Rainbow Room tonight. These are extraordinary, well-respected organizations that do amazing work for our kids. It is extraordinary what they do. They go very quietly. But child abuse, I'm sure Patricia will remind you, is prevalent in Rockwall County today. And we're blessed, I mean, truly blessed as a city, to have these organizations supporting us. So I'm blessed, I'm glad they're here tonight, and I'm glad that we could do this tonight. So the proclamation is, whereas we, children thrive in safe, stable, and nurturing families within their own communities, why is critical to build a system that supports families when they are in crisis, potentially supporting families before a crisis occurs is essential in preventing the abuse and malt treatment of children. Whereas through establishing partnerships with families, being built strong, healthy families, resilient communities where children can thrive, and whereas each year, the month of April, is dedicated to recognize the critical work being done across the great states supporting families before a crisis occurs. And whereas child abuse prevention occurs every day throughout the diligent work and tireless advocacy undertaken by families, friends, neighbors, house of faith, advocacy groups, non-profit organizations, schools, healthcare providers, social workers, and government agencies that support children and families in every community. And whereas some such agency in our community include Children's Advocacy Center from Rockwall County, or CAC, Empower, Lone Star Casa, Court Appointed Special Advocates, Rockwall County Department of Family Protective Services, DFPS, and the Rainbow Room. And whereas child abuse prevention cannot be tasked with one community agency or system and support, the rise and way for the family to become sufficient, stable, and thrive is paramount. And whereas today, we can create a brighter future for children, families, and communities in Texas and ensure tomorrow's leaders have the support they need to thrive and reach their potential. Now, therefore, I, David Bellings, Mayor of Fayetteville, on behalf of the City Council, hereby proclaim April 25th as, well, let's go blue, but Children Abuse Prevention Awareness Month of the City of Fayetteville, and encourage all citizens to work together, raise awareness, help prevent child abuse and neglect. So. Okay, Patricia. So Patricia, I'm sure you want to speak first. Sure. And the Lone Star Casa wants to speak, and I'm sure Jerry wants to speak, so let you guys go.
City Council members, thank you so much. We appreciate the recognition. April is nationally known as Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month, and it is so important that all the organizations that serve, you know, be able to say that we stand against this, and we stand against this in our community. We know that one in 10 children are at risk for some form of abuse before their 18th birthday. The Children's Advocacy Center has been providing services this month, marks seven years. Before we were in existence, kids and families were struggling. They were left floundering after the disclosure of abuse. And so the Children's Advocacy Center is uniquely designed to offer hope and healing to kids and their family, non-offending family members who have suffered from the trauma of abuse. And through that hope and healing, they're given opportunities to make sure they've been heard, they've been seen, they've been believed. And in addition, and while we are mandated by the Texas Family Code, we are largely supported at the local level. And so in addition to the direct services that we provide by highly skilled staff, we also offer prevention and education so that we can try to get ahead of it. And we're so proud of the partnerships that we have with the school districts and being able to serve children and make sure they are aware of body safety to hopefully prevent abuse or stave it off before it continues. And so, thank you. We can't say thank you enough for standing with us and for this proclamation.
All right. Next.
Good evening. I'm Lauren Rowe with Lone Star Casa, and I thank you as well for recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Unfortunately, sometimes abuse happens in the home, and where they're supposed to feel safe, they don't feel safe. And so, we get appointed to children who can no longer remain safely in their home due to abuse and neglect and come into the foster care system. Just so you guys know a little bit about the foster care system, they stay on average for 22 months, and in that, they have about on average three placements. And over 85% of our children in this county are outside the county, living in a foster home or with a relative. And so what our advocates do is they get placed with them, and they basically get to know everybody on the case, the caseworkers, the parents, the caregivers, the medical, education, all of that, and then they get to go before the judge and tell the judge what they believe is in the best interest of the child. Our goal is 100% to get the children back home to their families, so we work very closely with the families to hopefully get them the support and the resources they need. So not only does the abuse stop there, but then it also stops in the future, right? The kids don't continue to carry that. And so, our advocates are consistent. They remain with them throughout each placement and throughout everywhere that they go until they're returned safely back home or to another safe home. So, thank you once again for your support of the month of April.
All right, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. A lot of people haven't heard about the Rainbow Room. That's probably one of the biggest questions I get. We're actually 25 years old this year. We were established by Laura Bush when she was the First Lady of Texas. And the Rockwall Group or Chamber has been together since 2000. It's amazing how quickly that comes. We are the ones that make sure the children have what they need the next day when they're pulled out of their home. Most of them leave with just the clothes on their back. We make sure that we have clothes, diapers, school supplies, anything that that child might need to do their best to be normal when they go back to their school and their friends and their family so they don't look different. And we are 100% volunteer group. Most, all of our money comes from here locally, and we are blessed to be in Rockwall County. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We have a board here. All right. Next, please.
Next will be Agenda Item 6, Public Comment. And I've received one request to address the council from Lorna Grove, address 204 Northview Drive.
Welcome, Lorna. How you doing? Thank you for speaking.
I just, I'm not going to be up here long. I just want to say, I've looked at the agenda items, and I don't know how the council really works. I've not been at very many of them. But I just want to ask, if possible, before you take any action items on anything that's going to actually change the direction or continue a direction to the City of Fayetteville that we may or may not want it to go to, is there a reason that these actions can't be postponed until the new council comes in place in three weeks? I mean, if it's a good deal now, it'll be a good deal in three or four weeks. That's just my thoughts. And I understand from real estate and business and stuff that sometimes time is of the essence. And if it is the essence in these cases, please have the presentations tell us why.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you so much. All right, Vicki, we're starting with Michael. Go next, then we're starting with the presentation first, right?
Sorry. Yes, sir. We're going to start with Agenda Item 7, City Council and Municipal Development District Number One Action Items, and Matt Wavering is going to give a presentation.
Thank you, Matt. So Matt, just real quick. So after Matt's presentation, we're going to have, the MDD is going to have, you know, ask the question from the MDD, then the City Council, then the public can ask questions about the presentation. That's what we're going to do this afternoon. I mean, some evening, actually. This evening, so we can get all the questions answered, so, thank you. All right, Matt, ready?
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Honored MDD Board of Directors, looking over my shoulder here. Tonight, my presentation is going to cover Agenda Items Seven, A, B, and C. I do have a lot of slides to go over here, I'm trying to keep this as simple as possible, and then leave plenty of time for questions at the end of the presentation. So, this is Project Cactus, and this is a code name that we've assigned to this project. We've been working on it now for three or four months. The project has evolved from a much smaller project to a much larger, better project over that term of that three to four months. And I've heard, since I've been here for that period of time, I've heard the public clamoring for more retail, for more shopping, for more restaurants within Fate. I think this project delivers, and I hope that I can cover everything and make it very clear what we're doing here tonight. I also want to point out that the developers that are involved in this project, the representative from the Lafayette Crossing, the master developer, as well as the developer representing Gulf Coast Commercial, which again, I'll get into, that's doing this actual project, they're both here and they're available to answer questions, should there be any. All right, so what is Project Cactus? Project Cactus is an 80-acre commercial project. It is at the northwest corner of Crawford and I-30, and it is an entirely commercial project. Again, Gulf Coast Commercial Group is the group that is working this development. The project will include, this is a site plan, you know, this is, the site plan hasn't been approved or anything like that, but this is a concept of what we believe this development will look like. It includes 400,000 square feet of commercial space, that's retail, restaurants, and commercial space. It represents approximately $140 million in real property value to build these buildings, and we anticipate this will generate $2.8 million in sales tax annually to the city at full buildout. The project will include two large format retailers that will anchor the development. The first one in on the north side, the northeast portion of this site plan, is a Fortune 100 grocery store of at least 100,000 square feet. The one to the southwest is a Fortune 100 department store of at least 100,000 square feet, with the caveat that it must have a minimum of 50% of the sales being taxable. So in other words, not, not a second grocery store. The names of these particular entities that are interested cannot be released yet because the groups that are considering this project have not voted and approved for them yet. So, we do have to wait until those retailers are ready. But this project tonight, we're hoping will help us, help the developer to lock in those anchor retailers. Okay, so in order to do an 80-acre project with 400,000 square feet on a piece of dirt that has nothing on it, it requires a significant amount of infrastructure. And this diagram here gives you a bit of a snapshot of the type of work that's involved in this. This is in the Lafayette Development, or Lafayette Crossing Development, which does require an east-west connector road from Crawford, from 551, over to Wood Creek Boulevard, before any buildings can receive a certificate of occupancy. So before any, any business can open on this section of the development, some sort of east-west connector has to happen here. And so, most of the road that you see, and I guess it's purple, purple, and then it turns into pink over to that asterix, that is part of that required connector road. And that is also a piece of road that's in the city's master thoroughfare, master thoroughfare plan, meaning that is a requirement of public infrastructure that needs to go in to this, to this development. So when I speak of infrastructure this evening, I'll be talking about collectively roadways, sewer lines, water lines, stormwater and drainage, stormwater detention basins, turn and deceleration lanes, and then a stoplight at the Crawford entrance where that asterix is. Now, all of these, you know, turn and deceleration stoplight, they're in text dot right away, text dot control road, so of course, they do, they are pending text dot approval on those items there. All right, so I talked about the east-west connector and what is being required of the city. The current development agreement with the Lafayette Crossing Developer does utilize what's called impact fee credits. Whenever a developer builds a building anywhere in the City of Fate, they're required to play, to pay impact fees. So there's an impact to the roadway, there's an impact to the sewer system, there's an impact to the water system, and fees are paid to pay for that maintenance over, over time. So, within that development agreement with Lafayette Crossing, there's, the developer there is currently entitled to impact fee credits to help them build that public infrastructure. And we anticipate that that portion of the development is, is $9 million. So, the status quo as of today is that there's $9 million in impact fee credits available for this portion of the development. That all being said, there's a whole lot more in this development than just that road. There's also some additional connector roads that you can see on your screen. The big blobs you see are stormwater detention ponds, there's also a water line that needs to be moved and replaced. And so that total, we anticipate that cost to be up to $15 million. So you can see these numbers here, we have $9 million in eligible impact fee credits, we have a $15 million infrastructure lift, and that delta of $6 million makes that shortfall, makes this project not viable. As it stands today, the developer does not have the ability to attract these retailers and make this project work with the land values, with the infrastructure costs and everything else involved. So the developer came to us and said, is there anything that the city can do? And there is a tool the city can use, and this is Economic Development 101, if you will. You'll hear this term used quite often, and I will use this term quite often tonight, and that is 380 Agreement. What's a 380 Agreement? 380 Agreement is simply an agreement for economic incentives. It's, they're used widely throughout the state of Texas. The reason it's called a 380 Agreement is because it's authorized by Chapter 380 of the Texas Local Government Code. So a lot of times you'll hear these referred to as a 380 Sales Tax Agreement, or a 380 Agreement, Economic Incentive Agreement, all of those mean the same thing. It allows for sharing of revenues in a project, so a project produces fees, impact fees, sales taxes, property taxes. A 380 Agreement allows a municipality to share those new revenues with the developer to help pay for something, or it could be done with an individual business or retailer. Those costs, those, those revenues can also be used to reimburse for infrastructure costs, which is the focus of this discussion tonight. All of this has to be done to promote economic development and new business. So, that is certainly happening here tonight, we're talking about 400,000 square feet of retail, two big box anchors, that's absolutely new business and economic development. Okay, so why should we consider using a 380 Agreement for this project, for Project Cactus? With this public support, as I mentioned, it helps this developer to secure these anchor retailers that we are currently in competition with. So there are other cities very close to us that are considering these retailers, those retailers are considering those cities. There are viable sites available for them, and we want to capture them, we want to help the developer to lock this in. Without the anchor projects, this entire project doesn't happen. The other retailers want to be here with those anchors, again, without the anchors, we can't do it. So, this will help them to, to secure the financing, this helps them to secure the overall project and lock in those anchor tenants so that they will sign on and choose Fate. This will make the infrastructure reimbursements performance-based. So I previously mentioned the status quo is that the developer is entitled to impact fee credits. Now, they don't actually have to produce sales tax, they don't have to actually get a business open in order to get eligible for those credits. This makes it completely performance-based. So, not only does the infrastructure have to get installed, but the buildings have to get built, the retailers have to open, they have to start selling a product or a food and receive sales tax from that. So it's funded entirely by revenue produced by this particular project. It also includes a time limit to encourage the developer to move quickly, and also to secure commitments and secure quality retailers, because without quality retailers, this won't, the performance won't help them at all. So that's what a 380 is, that's why we're considering using a 380, and now we have a proposed 380 Agreement. Now, the Board, MDD Board of Directors and City Council, you all received a copy, we finalized the agreement, and both parties, city staff, city attorney, the developer, the developer's attorney, agreed to all, all the language, and we got that finalized on Friday night. So you've all had that agreement now for about three days to review. So that's what we're talking about tonight. Now, the, the very first point of the proposed Economic Incentive Agreement, the 380 Agreement, it's contingent upon an amendment to the existing Lafayette Crossing Development Agreement. So I've mentioned that a handful of times already because it has those impact fee credits in it. What this does, step one, is it eliminates the impact fee credits east of Wood Creek. So, if you want to split this development in half, Wood Creek is property on the west, Wood Creek Boulevard is property on the east, all the way over to 551, this amendment will strip away those impact fee credits, so the developer will no longer be eligible for those. Now, what the agreement now then establishes is the city reimburses the developer for the actual cost of the infrastructure, not to exceed $15 million, or the actual cost, whichever one is lesser. So, we've had some early estimates that look like it might be closer to 14, 14.3 million, but we also know that there's, you know, economic winds, there's the potential for costs to go up, and so, we're sort of raising that up to $15 million to cover any potential overages there. But this agreement is for the actual cost, or 15, whichever one is lower. There is also now a performance criteria, and it creates annual reimbursements to the developer for, for building these, this infrastructure. It's equal to 50% of the sales tax that's generated and collected by the city and the MDD. So, the city collects 1.5%, and the MDD collects 0.5%. So as a whole, 2% is what's collected by any product and service sold in the City of Fate. So, in this particular case, we're talking about coming out of this 80 acres, right now it generates zero, and then it'll generate a lot more after that. And when it does, 50% of that is the, is the eligibility for the developer. There's also a term of 10 years, I'm going to call this, refer to this as the shot clock, so, they'll march madness term for you here. You've got 10 years, starting January 1st, 2028, and that runs through the end of 2037. Now, the only caveat there is, some of these retailers want to get open in 2027, and if they are able to get open in 2027, as an incentive to do so, we have agreed to include any sales tax generated in the end of 2027, and we'll lump that into the 2028 to, to help that first payment be a little bit larger, because obviously this is going to ramp up over time, the sales tax will be lower, it'll ramp up over the course of four, five, six years, more retailers open and establish more sales. The agreement also requires that the infrastructure is complete. There is no request for reimbursement if the infrastructure is not done, there's no request for reimbursement if the buildings aren't built, if the businesses aren't open, and if the sales tax is not being generated. So 100%, it's based upon the creation of the sales tax. Again, I've mentioned this already, but the total reimbursements are limited to 50% of the sales tax during that term, and it doesn't really matter. If the shot clock expires and they've only received reimbursements on $12 million, that's it. The agreement is over at that point in time, so it is limited. Now, the city does have the flexibility to use a wide range of sources for the reimbursements. I've mentioned sales tax many times, and sales tax is the mechanism we're using to create what the developer can be reimbursed by, but the city doesn't have to use sales tax funds, they can use any number of funds to do that. The developer doesn't care, they just want, they want to be reimbursed for the cost of the infrastructure. Okay, so I will get back to that point, I have another slide on that, but I want to go back now and talk about the amendment to the development agreement. It's rather simple, but I just want to give it its own, its own slide here. So, again, Lafayette Crossing Development Agreement was passed around this time last year in 2024, and it provides those impact fee credits to the master developer for what's referred to as impact fee eligible. So, that roadway from the east to the west is an impact fee eligible project. In addition to that, there's a water line that needs to be moved and replaced. It's about a 20-year-old water line, needs to be relocated, and needs to be replaced, and that is something else that is, that is eligible. So this amendment removes all those credits for the Lafayette Crossing Development east of Wood Creek Boulevard. So this project does not take up all of that east side, it's, it's only 80 acres of that, but this actually removes all of the impact fee credits on the east side of the development. So what this does is it eliminates the possibility for so-called double dipping. The developer does not get to get and sell impact fee credits and get reimbursement for the infrastructure. They can only get one or the other, in this particular case, we'd be amending and stripping out those credits, and then the 380 Agreement then provides for the reimbursement. Now, there are also park development fee credits that are in that development agreement, those are not being impacted here, this is a commercial project, they don't pay into the park fund. And then I want to make the point that, that all components of Lafayette Crossing, all the different developments that will occur over, over the years, all of those individual lot developers that are building an actual building, when they go get their permit, they're paying their full impact fees to the city. Okay, so this is an anticipated timeline, this is, this is based upon feedback from the developer, what we expect to have happen. Mid 2027, we expect for this infrastructure to be complete. By the end of 2027, as I mentioned, the anchor grocery and department stores want to be open, so by the end of 2027, we expect those stores to be open. Then another year after that, into 2028, we expect the completion of another 50,000 square feet or so of retail shop space. When I refer to shop space, I'm talking about the shadow strip malls that you'll see that will, will flank department stores and grocery stores. So these are the type of retailers that like to be close to these large, large format retailers. And, and the developer, Gulf Coast Commercial, will build those, so that's why we, we can kind of control and have an idea when that's going to happen. And then the next couple of years after that, you're going to see continued build out of more shops, you're going to also see continued build out of the outlots, there's a handful of outlots along I-30, and then, you know, some of those, the developer might build a suit, others, they might sell that land, and, and another developer comes in and builds an individual, you know, whether it's a restaurant, or a quick-service restaurant, or an individual freestanding retailer. Okay, so I put this in here to give you all a very simple example of how this all works out, because I like, I like examples, it makes me help understand a project a little bit better. And so I'm going to make some assumptions here. Here are the assumptions. The assumption is, is that, yes, indeed, by the end of 2027, the infrastructure is complete, we get the infrastructure built, the developer gets the infrastructure built, and let's go ahead and assume that, you know, the cost is 15 million, it's right, $15 million on the dot, it could be over that, but it doesn't matter, it's, it's locked in at $15 million. Let's also make the assumption that in calendar year 2028, the very first year of the shot clock, the very first year of the 10 years of this agreement, a total of, sorry, $1 million is collected in city sales tax revenue from this project. So I'm, again, I'm combining the city and the MDD here, but that 2% is a million dollars. So, that number's probably going to be larger, but I'm using a very, simple one for simple math here today. So in that case, the developer earns 50% of the revenue that was, the sales tax that was produced out of that, so that's an easy number, $500,000 would be what the developer now is eligible for that particular calendar year for reimbursement. And then, so then that's the city's job at that point, okay, now it's 2029, and we've gotten a request for reimbursement, and we go, okay, first, the city, let's look at the infrastructure, was it completed? Yes, it was, it was accepted, okay. Now, let's look at all the invoices, was it the way we expected, is all the pricing look accurate? Yes. Have all these bills been paid? Yes. Okay. And then we communicate with the Comptroller's Office, has, has this indeed produced $1 million in sales tax? Yes, it has, okay. With all that, check, 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 then the city issues a check of $500,000 to the developer for the reimbursement in year one, okay? So that's how, that's how year, the first year, 2028 would look, 2029, 30, and so on, it's, it's the same structure. Of course, we already know the infrastructure's done, so there's no further checks on that, but just simply looking at the sales tax revenue production, and 50% of that is what the developer now is eligible for. Now, I did mention that this is, the, the parameters are sales tax, right? So the performance metrics are based on 50% of the sales tax. But the city is able to use any sources of revenue to make those reimbursements, anything lawful, okay? So there's a couple of different funds here, and this is, this maybe gets a little bit, a little bit wonky for you, but for those of you who care, there are impact fees that developers pay, and those, ever, all over the City of Fate, impact fees are paid, I mentioned. But if there's a roadway impact fee, that impact fee is now restricted, it is restricted to roadways. So it has to be used to either reimburse, or, or use, the city uses itself to build roads, roadways. There's a Water Capital Replacement Fund, there is money in that fund currently, and so that, I mentioned that water line, that 20-year-old water line that needs to be replaced, so that water line would be eligible for reimbursement from the Water Capital Replacement Fund. There's also the MDD Fund. Now, the MDD Fund is somewhat restricted because it has to be economic development projects. This is clearly an economic development project, but it is sales tax generation, so we expect about 1.7 million out of that 15 million, this big pie. This big pie shows you the slices of the pie here, so we'd expect 1.7 to come out of the MDD's restricted fund. And then finally, you get to the general fund, which is unrestricted. What we're attempting to do here is use the restricted funds first on the things that they have to be used for, and the areas they have to be used for, and then beyond that, use the unrestricted funds from the general fund. And again, no matter what, all of the funds are a source that is being produced out of this project. So in other words, in the absence of this project, it produces zero, there's no reimbursement. This project happens, it produces revenues. Those revenues from that project are then used to pay for the development, but in no instance would, you know, the city ever give up the other 50%. So we're collecting, that's 50/50. So the developer gets eligible for 50%, the city's collecting that 50% no matter what. Okay, some quick benefits I'll run through. Obviously, creates a regional retail destination with 400,000 square feet. It's going to produce the opportunity for us to attract shopping and food destinations that, this really puts Fait on the map from a retail standpoint. The project, the, the actual businesses will create hundreds of jobs. There's also the economic multiplier effect. I haven't calculated it in that, any of that in here for you. That's icing on the cake, but that economic multiplier effect is when the employees of the businesses that relocate to Fait, that open up a business, they now have a job, they now have money to spend, and so that can circulate back into the City of Fait through other means. So that is the economic multiplier effect that I talk about. These funds directly support this required and needed infrastructure. The money that the public is contributing stays here in Fait. It can't be removed. It's public infrastructure, it's going in the ground, it's going on the ground, it's staying here. Lawfully, economic development agreements like this can directly incentivize retailers. We can write a check directly to the retailer or to a business to get them to, to come to Fait, but in this case, we are not doing that. We're not picking the winners and losers. We're simply focused on the required infrastructure, which will help all of this develop. Lastly, it's performance-based. The reimbursement, again, I'll reiterate, it only happens if the developer performs. So if the developer builds half the infrastructure, there's no reimbursement funds. If the developer builds all of the infrastructure but never gets a store open, there is no payout. If the developer builds the infrastructure, builds the buildings, but stores don't actually open, or they're not successful, they don't produce retail sales tax, they never hit that employment, or that, sorry, that sales tax metric, they're never eligible for any type of reimbursement. So again, purely performance-oriented. So I talked about the, the sources for the city to use for the reimbursements, but this page is talking about the revenue sources for the city that will come out of this project. So first of all, I mentioned this already at the outset, but we're expected this to, this project to generate $2.8 million in sales tax at full buildout. Full buildout could occur in three, four, five years, and then that stretch continues on, and that number will go up over time. There's also the property tax revenue, so I mentioned the $140 million, when they just build these buildings, they're going to hit the tax rolls, and that, that, the city's portion of that is $362,000 per year at full buildout. A very similar number like that will also go to Rockwall County, of course, that's a taxing entity, and a much larger number will also go to the, the school district. Now, the school district, no kids are in these retail buildings, but they're still getting that revenue. So this is, this is absolutely a way of diversification of the tax base. This is taking the burden off of the individual residents and the rooftops in Fait, and it's focusing them and pulling them from commercial development. All of these individual businesses, on top of the, the real property, the building itself, will also have what's called business personal property, or business property. And that's equipment, that's fixtures, that's inventory. State of Texas treats all of those like real estate, real property. So all of, so, you know, again, every single store will have some level of that, could be, it ranges, right? So there's that icing on the cake on top of that. And then, of course, all those businesses will use water and sewer and power and everything else, and so there are utility franchise taxes on top of that, that are not, have not been calculated into this, into the slides here today. Okay, so a number of different action pieces tonight, so I mentioned 7A, 7B, and 7C. I've sort of covered everything here, but what you're being asked tonight, city council, is to, A, first approve the First Amendment to the Lafayette Crossing Development Agreement, and then the city and the MDD Board of Directors are both parties to the Agreement for Economic Incentives, the 380 agreement, and so they will both be asked to consider and approve those agreements as well. So I think I've covered everything as simply as I possibly can, but I'm here for questions. City staff's available for questions, and again, we also have the developers here too.
All right, let's, let's start with the MDD. Cynthia, I got any questions for us? Aaron, Todd, Mr. Chambers?
I do have.
Yes.
Since Fait is served by two different school districts, the tax money going to the schools, which school district will it go to?
Yeah, that's great, quite, quite, pretty sure it's Rockwall, right?
Rockwall ISD.
Yeah, this is all, yeah, this is all Rockwall ISD, yeah.
Zachary, any questions?
Yes.
You good? MDD good? Last question, perfect. Lance?
Just a couple of comments. First of all, property tax is generated out of this fully, fully built out is about 362, 362,000 a year, and if you look at, at what the payouts are going to be out of the general fund, the city actually has to come up with like 330,000 a year. So at that point, you're effectively ahead just from a property tax perspective, and you're ahead from a sales tax perspective. The good thing about this is that, that the sales tax, 50% of the sales tax generated is just a measurement for how much they can get reimbursed during that year.
Correct.
And it's limited, correct?
That's right.
10 years, so.
10-year shot clock, plus a maximum of the infrastructure cost.
Plus a maximum of the.
Or 15 million, whichever is lower.
So, so from the perspective of, of money coming out of the general funds, the city is already ahead by about $32,000 based, based on these assumptions from property tax revenue that we would have to pay back to the developer should they be eligible for that portion thereof. So just wanted to point out, remember, the city generates revenue from, from basically three areas: property taxes, sales taxes, permits and fees, and then there's a bunch of miscellaneous stuff that we do, or that we generate revenue. So we are not restricted to paying back an incentive solely for sales tax. Sales tax is just the measurement.
Correct.
Property tax can come out of the property tax, come out of a combination of it, come out of a combination of all three. So it's, it's important to understand that incentive deals, that we have, we have done incentive deals in the past, that we, we brought in Fresh and all that development that's happening over on the south side, I believe that this is, is going to generate a whole lot more money and a whole lot more revenue coming into the city from this side. And that was the whole purpose of, of putting in Lafayette Crossing, because I, I think the whole thing, when you look at it, when we first started looking at Lafayette Crossing, it was like close to a million square feet of commercial, and we're already 400,000, and it looks like we're ahead by about four years of development.
Jess, more Kelly? You go ahead.
Of the $2.8 million of estimated sales tax, is that count the 50% that we would split, or?
So that's, that's 100% of the sales tax generated from the project. So if it were in, within that 10-year period of time, then that, half of that is what the eligibility is, but, you know, as Councilman pointed out, we don't necessarily have to spend the sales tax funds.
Based off that, on the metric. And also, I mean, this would benefit other businesses that would come in because they would get the use of this infrastructure as well.
Oh, correct, yes, yes. As well as the general public, yeah.
On there, so. And then, of course, all the other businesses this could draw in, you know, we would, we would get 100% of that, that sales tax and property tax.
Yes, and I will, I will say that, you know, brokers, which I used to be one, right? Commercial real estate brokers are very excited about major projects like this, even if they're not involved in the major project. And the reason why is because it creates news, it creates activity, and activity begets new activity. So other retail developments that are in Fait currently will benefit from this project because of the, sort of the rising tide. Just be, you know, a retailer may want to locate in this development, but they can't, but they can find one across the street, and so that would be an added benefit. I think that's what your point now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alan?
Looking at some of our neighbors and some of the deals that they've made, 380 deals that they've made, I'm sure you have some of those numbers that you shared before, but just looking over here to our east, Walmart, the money that they, the City of Roy City paid back to Walmart goes back to Bentonville, correct?
That, that's right. So it's a direct incentive to Walmart in that case.
Or, you know, the IKEA goes to Sweden, if you will, you know? The thing that, that's really fascinating about this is that the money that is going back to the developer goes into the ground here in Fait in its days.
Yes, sir.
And that's one of the big things that we've heard over and over and over again about, you know, infrastructure first before we do any more development, and my question always back is, well, who pays for that infrastructure? And this is, this is a direct example of, of how this can work. And it's performance-based. If there's no business, there's no revenue, there's no money going back. You know, I think you said at one time, 0% of, or 50% of zero is still zero, you know? But what does, you know, we had a question earlier about the timeliness of this. What kind of competition is there for this kind of stuff in, in, in North Texas in general?
Yeah, so in North Texas, so these big box retailers will look at their market area, and they'll see where there's opportunities. They're looking for growth, obviously, looking for more rooftops, they're looking for population growth, and then they're also looking at their competitors, projects that have been announced, rumors that are in the market. They're looking at all of those things, and they're looking for a new location that can serve that area. Now, those retailers don't care about where the city limit line is between Rockwall and Fait, and Fait and Roy City. So if it's in that radius that they're looking for to serve their client base, they can hop on one side of the city limit or the other. And so, yes, both of these retailers have other options, and one in particular has very much dived into two locations, one in Fait and one in a neighboring city, and that's, yes, that is part of the timing here, is that we, we need to lock that one in, otherwise we miss it. And this is, this is a situation where if the developer gets just one of the big boxes, the project doesn't work. It does not create enough momentum, it does not create enough draw from other retailers to make the project. This project previously, when we first talked about it, was 25 acres with one big box, and it couldn't work. And then we got it bigger, and it's like, okay, it's a little closer, but it's still not there yet. And so, yes, the timing is critical on this one.
I guess Ricky Bobby said it best. If you're not first, you're last.
Yep. Scott?
Michael, on, hi. On the, on the impact fee piece of this, impact fees are paid by developers, whether it's house, business, whatnot, goes into a fund. When the developer builds a capital improvement project, they can come back to us for reimbursement on part of that. I've not seen the last, I did not watch the last Capital Impact Advisory Committee, but I, I know there is currently some shortcomings before buildout on what is eligible versus what is, what is eligible to be requested for reimbursement versus what's in the fund. And I know we've got, have had a couple of developers that have just not come back for some pretty significant reimbursements in the past. And typically, those reimbursements are first come, first served when a request is made. As it relates to the impact fees from this particular development, can we pigeonhole these to where these are committed to the reimbursement for this development?
For sure. Whenever we have a development agreement like this, we'll consider all other projects, so we'll look at the cash situation, and we'll put in our cash flow model. So in this case, we're not, we're not really worried about this, because as the, as the, it's almost like it slows down the impact fee payments, because if, for example, if there was no deal, and for some reason, they decided to go forward, which they probably wouldn't, but what we would do is we would issue them, as soon as they finished the infrastructure, we inspected it, we would issue them credits. And so then they could take those credits and sell them to other developments that are going on in the city, so they wouldn't be restricted necessarily. So let's say someone, the Hunts are doing some projects down south around Fresh, or a developer, a home developer, whatever, whoever, whoever's developing in the city, they could, they could sell those credits, and so we may be expecting impact fee revenue, but then Mr. Wells sells them to, to the Hunts, and of course, he's got to sell them for some sort of discount to encourage that, but that would take place almost immediately. Under this deal, there's a slow kind of repayment, and of course, we'll use, we'll use this, you see this graph, we're going to go around clockwise around the graph, we're going to use impact fees first.
Okay.
So as that project is, is building, they're paying impact fees at building permit, and then we're putting them in our, in our bucket, essentially our different impact fee buckets, and then we're reimbursing them slowly based on that. So we'll, we'll extinguish that, that 60% impact fee, then we'll go to the water fund, the water capital replacement fund with the utility, and then we'll go to the MDD sales tax, and then presumably, we'd go to the general fund. However, if we have more impact fees coming in, we use more impact fees. If we, if we, if MDD suddenly wants to be really gracious to us and give us more of their revenue, we'll gladly take it and use economic development sales tax. If not, if we've got other projects, then we can use general fund. We, so we don't see, the way we've analyzed this, we don't see any downsides as far as how this is coming in, or how the funds are going out, so I think we're in pretty good shape.
Okay, thank you. Next question is, this particular part of the development that we are amending as part of the development agreement also includes single-family housing and multifamily. As a part of that, we are removing any impact fee credits that could have been eligible to go to a multifamily developer or, or to a single-family developer. So, so there's no longer that, that, not ambiguity, but unknown that there theoretically could be a, a, a multifamily developer that pays less impacts fees.
That's correct.
So a multifamily developer will pay full freight on impact fees, that will go back to help reimburse this project, will also happen with the single-family residents that are going in, correct?
That's right. Anybody getting a building permit on the east half of Lafayette Crossing, from Wood Creek over to 551, will pay full impact fees.
Okay. And then the credit structure is still in place for the western part, which is more commercial, technology-focused, job center-focused.
That's correct.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, Mark Harper.
Okay, so a couple of things. I hear a lot of people talk about infrastructure and wanting more infrastructure. This project gives us that infrastructure at a significant, I wouldn't say savings, but it's, but at $3 million a lane mile, if we had to build that without this commercial development there, we would be paying out-of-the-city funds a lot more than this $15 million over time. It's truly $6 million of these, 15 million is not entitled, so I, I mean, I should say 9 million of that is guaranteed to the developer if they build it. It would happen whether we signed this today or didn't sign this, so 6 million is what we're talking about in a difference between what they would have already gotten over that. In 2027, Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, we expect our permit revenue to dry up in 2027, and this project, all this commercial project would offset that revenue and hopefully alleviate the need to, to raise taxes maybe, or something that would happen when we run out of permit fees.
Right, we, we updated a, a chart for you in the budget presentation in August, and at that point, our estimate was about 1.44 million in, in impact as far as the dropping between single-family permit volumes that are coming in now and single-family permit volumes, and other permit revenue that'll come in '27, '28. So we'll see, there's only so many single families. If folks are not excited about neighbors, which a lot of folks are not, there's only some, the good news for them is there's only so many single-family permits out there to beget, to be gotten, and so when that starts to kind of trickle down, our plan is to replace that with business-type revenues.
Right.
That, that is about to happen in the short term. Not that other projects can't get built. We've got different things. I think there's one at P&amp;Z Thursday for 100 lots, or something like that. So there'll always be proposals coming in, and we'll vet them using our comprehensive plan, and, and when we update the plan, coming up here shortly, we'll update it with using the new comprehensive plan.
But not including anything that could come in the future, this will set us up to offset those lost permit fees, correct?
Correct. Based on our analysis, we did a more robust one earlier in the, last year, about this time, and then updated that during the summer. We think that the, the timing is almost perfect for those commercial revenues to pick up where the residential. where the residential drop will take place. So yes, this is kind of nick and nick of time. And a lot more, of course, goes into those analysis. We could have a lot more. We could have a lot less. It just kind of depends on the economy. But I think if things keep going the way they're going, based on this, the addition of the retail properties that would make room for all those businesses to come and what we've seen, I think will, I think it's coming in quite nicely.
Okay, thank you.
Cody.
I'm going last. So a lot of the comments and questions have already been asked at this point. But I just wanted to reiterate that we have to build that infrastructure anyway. So when we are talking about $15 million as the cap for the infrastructure, this is something that had to be built in order to bring in that commercial revenue that we all like about the Lafayette Crossing project. For me, that was the good part of Lafayette Crossing. You know, I didn't like the apartments, but I loved the commercial. But in order to get there, we have to be able to build the infrastructure. We have to be able to remove or move the water line. We have to build the roads, sewer lines and all that stuff. So this is just the city reimbursing the developer for stuff that we already had to invest into our own city. And we either have to do it this way or we have to do it out of raising taxes. So I just wanted to point that out for the public that this is something that we would have had to have done regardless. So essentially, for, for me, in my perspective, that's a net positive. Another thing that I wanted to point out is that the impact fees that were, you know, given last year during the original deal, it's $9 million. So this is canceling that out. We would have had to have given them a credit for $9 million. This is being removed. So they can't do both. Like you said, there's no double dipping. So that's important to me. Another thing that was pointed out was that this still starts creating revenue for the city in 2027. When we originally started talking about Lafayette Crossing, one of the downsides for me was the fact that we weren't going to really start seeing any kind of return on that for another five to 10 years. This kind of puts us in the fast lane and we can start creating revenue almost immediately. You know, 2027 is right around the corner. And to Mark's point, when we do lose the single family building permits and they dry up, we have to be able to replace that revenue stream. So to me, those are very important points that we all need to consider. I know there was comments beforehand about, you know, why we couldn't wait until after the election. One of the reasons in my mind is, you know, staying competitive and making sure that we seize that opportunity. But in addition to that, we have, we have three races, one of which is a three-way race, which means we might be going to a runoff. So it wouldn't be three weeks. It would be more like three months. Because that would be mid-June before we could talk about it and then we have to catch everybody up to speed. So in my mind, that's why we have to go ahead and vote on this tonight. So.
Okay, thank you.
To the point of the timeline, Ms. Jen, the, the sectors go in cycles. And retail sector, five to 10 years, maybe an average of seven, if you will. Right now, the retail sector is, is hot, but there's a lot of uncertainty in the future. This is the, the chance to capitalize in my mind. And if we miss this cycle, there is the potential that it, it doesn't really come back around for another, you know, six, seven, eight years.
Sure.
There is the potential for that.
Yeah, and you know, if worst case scenario, we have an economic crash, they can't fulfill their end of the bargain. We are out $0. This is purely performance based. If they don't perform, they get nothing. If they do perform, it's paid out over time and it's 50%. So we're still getting 50% of that revenue that's created. To me, this is, this is a good deal in my mind.
Okay, one last question for you, then you're done. So the, this development, the commercial development is not being built near any housing. Any new neighborhoods is all on the, on the other side of the development, right? This is commercial development straight up along I-30 into the open, you know, the empty space.
There's a site plan there. So yeah, the lines you see at the bottom, that's I-30.
Right. So there's no, you know, neighborhoods nearby. There's many yards away. Okay?
Yeah, in fact, the, the neighborhood to the north, they're separated by Detention Pond, which is basically green space.
Okay, great.
That won't have water in it most times.
Right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
One quick last question.
Sure, Ashley.
I, I know there's been a lot of talk about this kind of being kind of rushed. We're just now being briefed on this tonight. They had no idea even what this was even roughly about. What about a, if for some reason we were to delay this vote until Friday? At 72, we could do 72 hours. Let's say we called a special session. I know it's not going to be popular. Everybody wants to go out on that. What damage could that do to this proposal if everybody had a few extra days to kind of look over everything and we came back here Friday night, did a special session, came in, public, public speaking and, and vote on it? Time is of the essence. So I'll simply say that any day, any hour, whatever, could be more time. So I, you know, whether it's a week, a month, a year, you know, it's. Would it put it, would it put the project in danger? I, I think it's at risk no matter what. The, the other part of it is, is those retailers are looking at the other cities and they're. Are we, are we interested in courting them, bringing them here and, and doing this project? If the answer is yes, then if there's no other questions and there's, there's nothing else that needs to be analyzed, then from my pers, I don't get a vote. So from my perspective, I'd say it's good to go now.
Uh, we, Friday, we're closed. We're a good Friday.
All right. Friday's a good Friday.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. I appreciate that. Any public comments? All right, seeing none. We'll move. Okay. Okay, please, sir, you have to come up. I got it. Go, come up, examine address. You got three minutes. Mostly three minutes.
My name's Alex Tutt. This is Julia. I'm not sure exactly who I'm supposed to be addressing this to. Uh, I think it was kind of hinted at, but the, the, the one big box retailer that was not the grocery store. Can it be assumed that that would be unique in Rockwall County? Like, as in it would draw on people from, from other cities to actually come here or, or getting three Chipotle's in a row?
All right. Matt or, or Jennifer or Cindy, do you want to answer that question?
Well, I think, I will say they're limited to Fortune 100 retailers. And so you, you could pull up the list and see who's, who's on that. But no, we, we can't make that guarantee, of course.
But, but excellent drive, by the way. Really good. I really appreciate that comment. Lauren.
Yeah, Warren Magazine, 111 Mustang Drive, State Texas. I know this property for a long time. So when I was mayor, we were trying to get that thing developed. We had a lot of different projects up there. A lot of different things that we were thinking about. We tried to think out of the box. This is a very good project for this city. This is a great opportunity to bring in a lot of retail, which is something that everybody has been saying, we need more retail and we need more retail. This here answers that question. This will bring in retail. This will bring in the people. This will bring in the infrastructure. The other thing that people were talking about is infrastructure. Make sure you put that in first. This does that. This is a great project. 380 agreements are really good. I've seen them. I've done them. They're very great for the city. There's a lot of good positives of it. So I think this is a great project. I think it should be passed. And I think it would benefit the city immensely.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Anybody else? Once, going twice. All right, three times. Okay, we're moving on. Next, please.
Okay, so now we will move to Agenda Item 7A, which will be City Council Action, which will be an electronic vote through the voting system to discuss, consider and take any necessary action regarding the First Amendment to the Development Agreement for Lafayette Crossing.
I'll take a motion, please.
I make a motion that we amend the development agreement with Lafayette Crossing.
I got a second. Okay, a motion by Councilman Robbins, a motion by Councilman Harper. Sorry about that. It was stereo. A motion, a second. Any further discussion by City Council? Seeing none, please vote. The motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Next, please. MDD action.
Next will be 7B, which is MDD action. And this vote will be either a hand vote or you can say yea or nay. And that is discuss, consider and take any necessary action regarding agreement for economic incentives for Project Cactus.
I'll take a motion on the, the agreement for the economic incentives. Okay, I have a motion. You have a second? Cynthia, a second. We'll vote by a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your hands.
All right, so, so the public, so we get that MDD first. Now it's council's turn.
Correct. So now Agenda Item 7C, City Council, discuss and take any necessary action regarding an agreement for economic incentives for Project Cactus.
I'll take a motion, Alan.
I make a motion that we agree, approve the 380 economic agreement as stated in Item 7C.
A motion, a second. A motion by Councilman Harper and a second by, who first? Okay, Councilman Robbins. Any further discussion by City Council? Seeing none, please vote. Mystery. Vicki, do we have our system working?
I'm, I'm looking to IT. It's rebooting, okay.
All right, let's, Vicki, do we do electronic or, or begin to do a roll call vote?
If you want to do a roll call vote, that's, that's your choice. Yes.
All right, let's do that. Cody?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
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 Lance? And the mayor votes, I'm, the motion passes 7-0. Next, please.
So you wanted to move to Item 12 now?
I do, absolutely.
Item 12 is City Council Consent Agenda.
Any question on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll take a motion. We'll do. I'm sorry. Well, who's, no, we're.
I'm sorry.
The MDD is going to be here for the parks design.
Yep.
So the MDD is going to stay in session and we do the parks.
Correct, because it's the, the joint work session is between Council, MDD and Parks.
Got it. I'll take a motion on the consent agenda.
Make a motion to be approved. Consent agenda is presented.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. Not working. All favorites say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, and then Council Item Number 13A, Discuss, Consider and Take Action Regarding Resolution Number R 2025-021, Approving a Contract Agreement with Randall Scott Architects for Architectural Services for the 2024 DPS Bond Building Projects.
I think Scott, this is yours. You're good. Michael, you want to walk through real quick for the public, please?
Yes, we are, we're back from the prior meeting and we put some more information in the packet for you just detailing how we've, how we scored the different proposals as far as the finalists and some of the different timelines, et cetera. And so hopefully that, I think that was enough for you all.
Let me ask the council question. We'll see. Cody, you good? Mark?
I'm good.
Scott, Alan?
Thank you.
You're good, Lance? Mr. Steve, thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. He just walks up and it, it just happens, doesn't it? All right, I'll take a motion, please.
I'll take a motion. We pass Resolution R 2025-021.
A motion, I have a second.
Second.
All right. Any discussion by council? Is it working yet? Okay.
Sorry, no, he's still rebooting.
Cody? Mark?
Yes.
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 Mayor votes yes and the motion passes 7-0. Next, please.
So now we will move to Agenda Item 8, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Call to Order and Confirm Acquorum.
All right, I would like to call to order our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. It is 7:14. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum?
Yes, ma'am, we do. And so now we will move to Agenda Item 9, which is Fayette Station Park Design Workshop. This is a joint workshop between the City Council, Fayette MDD and Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Okay, Michael, who is going to do the workshop for us?
We have, we have our park planners.
And? And?
We have our park planners.
Okay. I'm going to stay, Mr. Downs?
We honestly didn't talk about who would introduce Spencer, but I'm happy to do it. This is Spencer Freeman representing Park Hill. We've been working for a handful of months, well, for a long time about the master planning of what our downtown Fayette Station Park will look like. And as, as the needs of the community have continued to grow and some of the different successes we've seen in our downtown, some of that's evolved. And we've engaged with Park Hill to master plan what in the, in the more immediate future Fayette Station looks like. And so I'll let Spencer take it from here, but we appreciate him being here. Our Parks Board, our MDD are both present as well as their participants. And obviously the future of our parks and our outdoor space and MDD being our downtown and it's some of the funding sources for this project will come through the MDD. So with that being said.
So Steve.
Yes, please.
And they're going to help, help facilitate the conversation between the boards?
Correct, yeah, yeah. Spencer will, yeah, help facilitate the, the conversation, kind of talk about the input that has been received by some people here and from some people in our downtown. And yeah, really just engage in a conversation. This isn't about voting tonight. This is presenting some concept plans, getting your feedback so that we know the direction to go as we finalize the design and get ready to start construction, hopefully sooner than later.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate you having us. My name is Spencer Freeman with Park Hill. I also have back here Jared Horford, who's been leading up the design on this. As Stephen said, we came here about a month ago and presented just some general ideas, not. Okay. Apologies. What we did is we came here and we wanted to get stakeholder feedback from the people who'd be most impacted by this master plan update. Like Stephen said, there's been a lot of change in your city since the last time we looked at this project or this piece of land. So Phase 1 was done a couple of years back, but in that time, there was, you know, the food truck park that was developed and that's in need of, you know, a reallocation of space. And they came to us saying, hey, can we look at reimagining this portion of Fayette Station Park as some of this new developments come on to meet the needs of the stakeholders and the citizens of Fayette? So we met with them and got some ideas, showed them some ideas, some representative imagery to kind of get their, their palette moving in the right direction. That was with the leaders of City Staff. What we did, we, we took that input that they gave us. We went back and produced three concepts that we came back and met with City Staff, Steve and Matt and Steve, to get their feedback on the direction that we were moving. So what we produced from those meetings with the City Staff, three concepts was something to come together and produce one that we could incorporate all, not only stakeholder feedback, but City Staff feedback, which is what you see here in this concept plan. And I understand that we'll end up talking a little bit more in a group setting to do this. But as a whole, this shows the Sauce and Vine, working around that. And I want you to keep in mind when we're talking about this tonight, is this easement up here on the north, northeast corner? That limits what we can do as far as verticality. So we were asked to bring in container type development. So you'll see that centered over here towards where the existing flagpole and memorial bricks are in the circular piece down here, number 14. We'll have more permanent structures there, which would represent possibly the barbecue, the momaritas. And then more temporary, where people can come in and rent those facilities out or a more permanent style food truck area designed into that space as well. And that would move you further into more of like a plaza for the, you would trickle down towards the green space, which would be a synthetic turf area into number 19. And this may be best if I kind of zoom in here. So number 19 would be like a grove seating, so that space could spill out between the food trucks, the permanent facilities down towards a stage at number four. Number three would be your synthetic turf. And then that would, we would tie all this back in with the existing infrastructure you have here, which was part of Phase 1 and Sauce and Vine. Moving further east, currently there is a new playground, number five, which is a nice facility. But we were tasked with tying all this back together while maintaining a park-like feel in an urban, the urban center. So what you see here is number five, number six are existing facilities, which is your playground. which is your playground and your restroom facility. And that would tie into the existing parking lot, which currently could house food trucks, which you'll see there is number seven, and that would be more of like a park-like plaza soft development, which we could have containers incorporated into that to tie it together as a whole with the park, while maintaining that more park-like feel. These particular containers that you see here in just a second, representative imagery, would be more of like seating nodes. You could also look at those as maybe like reading nodes. And these can be added to, taken away, those types of scenarios. This is just to get these, give you an idea of what is available in this space. Number 10 would be more traditional pavilion-type facility. And then one thing I should note that's been, was relayed to us, was look at ways that this can be a year-round use. So not just spring or fall, but maybe like those areas where it gets a little bit chillier, you know, how can we incorporate heating elements into seating spaces that are sheltered? So you'll see that in these little, these nodes, and these, like I said, those can be incorporated more throughout this park facility. And then also, in the shelter areas, fans, fan sprays, as well as electric heating elements. Number 17 is more of your park lawn type space. Again, this is, this was developed as a park, not that many years ago, it was a pavilion and open space. So they want to be true to that and not totally close this space off from the park element. And then 15, and I'll jump back, 15 and 15 on this side represent future trail connections. This is one that would connect to the development north, which currently has a trail spur coming out, it's just waiting to be connected. You do have the railroad crossing there. A lot of times when we've dealt with this scenario, you take it up to the railroad crossing on one side, on the other side, and then it's just like a pedestrian crossing there. At your own risk, top of the hill. And number 15 on this connection would represent the trail connection between cities, and this one would be to Roy City if that plan ever comes into play. But that is part of your master plan. And then we would address as much parking as we could fit here. So this could, we could look at taking this parking up further into the easement, that is allowable. But we're expanding the roundabout parking there, and then providing access with ballers to limit actual emergency vehicles only, or the food trucks if they came into that way. Most, this entry would be service vehicles only. This other entry on the east side, where there's currently a dumpster enclosure, they already have an entry there, so that would be utilized to get the food trucks and any kind of service vehicles to serve the restaurants at number 11 with a turnaround. And again, that would be blocked off from, through traffic, to limit the actual park space from vehicle, vehicular conflicts. And then I'll move through these fairly quickly, and then we can just have a general discussion. Steve, are you good with that? So we've pared down the representative imagery. We showed much more in our stakeholder meetings to kind of give, to get a feel for whether they liked this style more, or that style more, or what people were feeling when they described Fate and Fate Station Park. Some of the things that we heard in those meetings was screening the stage, being more industrial feel, that could be tied back to the history of a railroad, without being, you know, exactly like, let's make this look like a depot, just kind of have that type of feel. So you'll see that imagery here. And another thing was the green, the green room type facility. So this has an idea of being designed where you can have, bring in more than just the local band, you can bring in somebody that can set it up, set up speakers, lights, have larger events, without having an oversized facility, just one that can take on a lot. And using containers as the green room. Given an enclosed feel with the back screen, sometimes screening, we did take into consideration sun angles. You don't want performers, nor the pedestrians looking back into the sun. Colorful accents is one thing you'll see here as we move through, using those containers. You know, they don't have to be the green, or the yellow, or the off-color red, you know, painting those to kind of have a part, make a statement as you're coming in and out of downtown. Place to be. Right here, you kind of get that example, if you look off to the picture in the top right, of how you can make that statement. And you can also mix the varied massing heights, is one thing that we considered. So most of these pedestrian access would be ground level, but that doesn't mean you can't use stacking and massing heights to create that statement, to create that billboard, and even murals, if it's not just a certain color. The anchor tenants, amenitized courtyards for them with fencing. We do know that, you know, there is a bar-like facility, so that could come into play with having fencing around those courtyards, or at least available to those types of tenants. And then flexible integration with existing uses. So that kind of comes into play with the children's more park side, where we had those food trucks, where we're keeping those in the parking lot. Those would be more designated towards the snow cones, the birthday parties, those types of trucks that came in, whether people rented them, or they just come in there on a general day. If it's a bigger event, you can utilize that space, as well as your more centralized food truck entertainment area. Focus on seating and gathering spaces, which I think we did both as, in the food truck areas, restaurant areas, as well as over in the park type facility. And then these are the rooms that I was talking about, you know, how we utilize these, how many of these are utilized. I think this is, this is the type of use of this, of a container that can be spread much more than what's shown, or it can be pulled back to more strategic locations. But this would be where you provided the heat and cooling spaces for sheltered seating areas, and then the more pavilion style with cooling fans, and also that would be the opportunity to provide heat as well. And just to kind of give you an idea, that we didn't just come and take one and come to you with it, we presented several of these concepts and ideas to staff to work through, you know, how this was going to fit. You know, a lot of this came back to, you know, overdevelopment of the park, wanting to keep the park feel, is how you come back to that finalized concept, which is kind of more of a concept of this, and a mix of this version and this version. And this is, gives you an idea of our work session that we had previously with city staff. This was developed out of that workstation, session. So with that, I'll open it up to comments and questions.
Let's start with the Parks Board. Any questions, comments in the Parks Board?
And there is a wireless mic, of course, we passed around, but this really is an opportunity for feedback. We're in no way with the finalized plan before you tonight, but we've taken kind of the input so far, but we wanted to come to you with some feedback that we have heard from the public, from the downtown businesses, those that own property around. But we really would love, of course, any feedback you have, things you like, things you don't like, things you'd like to see enhanced, that we wanted, we're still in that stage.
Ryan, or Barry, or somebody?
Can we get copies of that for our next meeting at the Parks Board, so we could discuss the three different concepts?
Yeah, this, yeah, this for sure will be public. Now, if there's anything you want to discuss tonight, of course, the designer won't be there with you to make some of those changes. But yes, this will be public, this will be made available to you.
So Stephen, I think the question is, can you pin around their agenda item, Parks Board agenda item?
Yep, Steve's back there giving me the thumbs up.
Okay.
You got it.
Any other?
I know I've mentioned it in many of our other meetings, so I just want to clarify, or not necessarily clarify, but just really reiterate the value in connecting this area to the neighborhoods. Where it sits, we all know that the, you know, kind of our Achilles heel, if you will, is the railroad. That's going to be our biggest obstacle to connect the neighborhoods. And unfortunately, that is the biggest obstacle to the largest part of the neighborhoods. And I'd really like to hear more discussions in future discussions about how we would solve that, or ensure that we prioritize solving it, rather.
Stephen, you have a comment on that?
No, Ryan, I appreciate that feedback. We've had over times, as we were doing our trails master plan, and Robbie's here who kind of led some of those, and the number one thing, when we're talking about trails, that comes up is how do we connect to downtown? So I think you speak, not just for yourself, but for a lot of the public, and we're working through that. The railroad, like you mentioned, there are some obstacles. There was, our hope was to be able to get there directly north of this parking lot, but the railroad did, you know, nix that. So our best is to kind of use an existing crossing over here on 15, as you see is number 15. But I think to your point, that's not the only cross, that's not the only connection we need to be considering, and we'll continue to do that. I appreciate it.
And piggybacking off of Ryan's statement, my thing is always, this is beautiful, and it would add to the community, but it becomes very frustrating when you have a parking issue. And as we talk about maxing out on the number of homes that we have, we're putting this facility here, it's going to be state-of-the-art, it's going to be, going to be beautiful, and I'm already seeing that parking is going to be a nightmare. So what are some other options, places that we can consider for parking? And one thing I'd also like to suggest, particularly on weekends, shuttling, shuttle service, you know, especially dealing with going across the tracks, making that more appealing. Just getting the public's view on things that would encourage them, or keep them from taking advantage of this, this facility, or this project that we're building here.
Yeah, two very, very good points. And you're right, with the stage, it's going to be programmed and have larger events, and, you know, I think we see it at some point potentially, some of our Christmas tree lightings and such going down that way. Then those large events, where we know we won't have enough parking, how do we handle it? That's a good point, but that's something we'll have to continue to discuss for sure. The other part of it is just the parking day-to-day, and every, you know, every weekend. So we do show some parking here. We have worked with the railroad in recent months to get permission from them to build more parking anywhere along their easement, which essentially kind of stretches. Now, you won't see this in the picture here, but just west of the two buildings that are kind of grayed out in the bottom left is the gas station. We have worked with the railroad who owns that land, have permission, have some concept plans, have engineers drawing to add a parking lot there, that'll add another, Ryan, I think we're saying about 50 or so? Yeah, 50 additional spaces there. And we're talking about an additional pedestrian crossing, so to make that a safe crossing from behind that gas station. That permission to use that continues all the way down the railroad as you're going towards the Lafayette Crossing development that we discussed later. So we can continue to add parking that way. So currently, extend parking here and add it behind the gas station. That's our most immediate fixes for the parking. But we have, we do luckily, through the railroad, in a lease agreement that they already have sent to us, have the ability to continue to build parking in their space.
What would be, is two-story an option? Because I would hate to see more land, I mean, being on the Parks Board, Parks is what we do, and so we like to leave our spaces green as much as possible, with chairs.
Yeah.
So instead of taking up more park possibility, what is the possibility of adding two-story?
No, and I, yeah, very good point there. Robbie, our planner here, he is salivating at the thought of a parking garage, right now. But the, that is a very expensive thing to do, significantly more expensive per space. In downtowns, it continue to grow and become that kind of hot pocket, if you will. Structured parking becomes a little more feasible. Now, what we're talking on the railroad, the railroad has very limited uses that they allow. They don't allow any buildings, or anything like that. So with that same thought in mind, because I think you're right on, what we were thinking too, is how do we utilize space that can't be used for anything else as parking? And that whole railroad easement becomes that. So that, where we're talking about adding parking could not be anything else. I would say with the exception of this, that extension could be more park. So that's kind of the compromise there, is do you add more green space, or add more space for the people to come enjoy green space? I hear you, yeah, I hear what you're saying.
I would add that, Stephen, you know, there's going to be a drainage element to this. If anybody's been out there recently to that playground area, it's just, it's marshing. So you can see how much water just kind of comes here and it stands. So it's going to be addressed with this project. And one of the things that we thought about doing was, you know, looking at the possibility of tying in grant funds for this. And one of those grant funds, one of the key items that you can put on any kind of application is any kind of trails or signage nature stuff, so you can maybe tie, maybe there's an opportunity here to tie in how drainage works into this trail system within this small park, and provide signage for children, anybody using the park to kind of learn some of those processes of how you can treat drainage before it gets to, and also utilize it as a way to actually drain this thing properly, where it doesn't have standing, standing areas of water. Because what you're doing here is you're having to take everything underneath that railroad at two positions. So that also kind of limits how much you can utilize there as far as parking goes, because you're having to utilize specific areas. I think there's two key areas in this easement stretch where drainage collects and goes underneath the railway to the creek on the north, the north side over here.
Any more comments, Parks Board?
I have a question. So with the container buildings being metal, and we having 100-degree weather often in the summertime, I'm wondering how energy efficient they are as compared to traditional building materials? And I guess how much more would need to go into making things cooler, if we're using the steel buildings?
I would say, like, that's going to be now how you develop it architecturally. There's going to be a lot of components that go to any kind of architectural element out here. As most of you are aware, it's going to take a substantial amount to structurally make the pads so these don't move enough, so there's one. And two, I would say to that, there's spray foam, so you can, you can just look at this as a shell. You know, all these buildings have a certain amount of insulation in them, and this would be no different. Now, whether you have HVAC units, like a mini-split, or something of that nature for specific, you know, maybe your anchor pieces, or even the ones that would be more semi-permanent, you know, people may be coming out, how that's set up, it may be different. But one thing is also, these anchor pieces will have to have a little bit more mechanical attention to them. Don't want to get too far into the weeds on it, but you know, there's sewer needs, sanitary sewer needs that these will require, just to bring them up to the building code. So I guess the simplest answer there is, I would think they would need to apply the building code standards to these facilities as any other, even though they're containers.
Okay, thanks. So Michelle reminded me of another suggestion we had, which was to add some, like, educational markers that kids can learn about. I see that there's a native prairie planting section, so, for example, having signs just explaining what the kind of plants are and things like that.
Yes, ma'am. And that would, that would tie into what I was talking about with that, you know, you can expand the trail in that easement, if it's going to be, you know, native wildflowers, prairie grasses, and also key drainage pockets that kind of demonstrate it. So you can do trail signage for native plants, and also, you know, how drainage works, just educational all over. And that's also key, what grant funding, they look for those types of things, those are key.
And just going forward, building off of that, because that's something that we have talked about at Parks Board, when we're planning things in the city, especially green places, to be mindful of our young people. Just like we have the book that goes around the park here, having things like that that will just, one, bring them in, and two, pique their interest. It's nice to have things there. It's like having a dog park, that it's not going to work unless you bring the dog there, run it through the park. And it's the same thing, you know... And it's the same thing, you know, with the kids, just having something that they can gather around that's uniquely theirs, that's something that's interactive, maybe it's a touch and a feel. But just making sure that when we're including green elements, that's nice, but we have some, some kids, especially with sensory needs, you know, that may need to be up on their own or function better in intimate spaces instead of running around on the playground. So I'd like to see when we, when we plan any project in this city, to make sure parents with sensory children know, or just parents with children in general, who just like smaller, quieter environments, something that they can gather around without feeling that they're going to be overwhelmed.
I agree. And inclusive elements into playgrounds, if they're not contained within that playground, you can also, like, space seventeen would be a good option to include some of those elements. Maybe they're much smaller reading note type facilities where a kid with sensory issues could go and just get away from the noise. Or maybe even what we've been using here recently a lot is different types of outdoor instruments, which they've come a long ways, but that's another thing, that's a sensory item that can be inclusive for a lot of, especially if you can just easy access to them.
I have a quick question about the drainage. I do love the education piece of it. Do we have any plans to utilize that drainage for any type of recycled irrigation or non- potable options? Because we do have a lot of green space up there, and if we can maximize that drainage for our benefit, are there any plans for that?
Typically, in that scenario, you would have to have a pond. So you'd have to have a pond and then a pump to recirculate that whole thing back in through a system. It's pretty substantial to do that, so I wouldn't say underneath in the easement, but in a traditional park, yes, that is always an opportunity to do that.
All right. Does the board have any other questions or comments? No, on this side? No. All right, Spencer. Madam Secretary, are we ready to adjourn?
Just a second. No, we have to go through the rest of the thing. MDD Board, any questions, comments from you guys? All right, Zachary.
Two quick questions. What, what kind of timeline does the city have on developing this area? And secondly, how will it be paid for? Maybe Michael can answer that question.
Timeline-wise, we're looking at design, maybe like the next, this is just conceptual design. So we're looking at if we had the go-ahead for a capital project, this is going to go into the capital budget process we anticipate for this coming budget cycle. And so as the budget, CIP, Capital Improvement Project Team works through that, we'll try and put this in the next five years. So hopefully, you know, ideally, it would go into next year's budget for design, and then we would move to construction in a, in the following year. However, we can accelerate that timeline or slow it down depending on the desires of the boards and the council. Funding sources, for, we have different funding sources. We've got park development fees. I don't know if, I don't know if the container park is, I know Fate Station Park is on the list. So we've got elements of Fate Station Park that are eligible. So we've got park development fees we could pull from. Not a lot in those particular buckets. We've got a community one, and we've got a District C, this falls into District C. So actually residential construction within Lafayette Crossing, I believe, would dump into this park fee bucket. We've also got MDD as a potential funding source. And then above that, of course, you could do a park bond or whatever. So depends on how expensive it is and can, if you want to phase it or if you want to do it all at once. So there's a lot of options.
I was going to add that, you know, you mentioned the cost, and that's part of our process. Once we take the input again and come back with, kind of narrow this down, that is part of what we're going to provide the city of fate, is, you know, how is this going to break out in costs for not just infrastructure, but the container park, the whole thing, the turf? And that way, they can look at breaking that, that cost out if needed.
Yeah, I would add, just as far as timing, and the discussions we've had with different boards, members of the board at least, and then the public, I think, one of the things they've made clear is they don't want to be under construction for the next seven years of, you know, piecemealing this together. And so, but once, once we look at costs, we can start putting the actual numbers together. There are different mechanisms to fund it all at once, and there's obviously mechanisms to fund it over time. So we'll look at those options and obviously make determinations with y'all what's best.
I've got mine, I'm good. I've got mine answered.
All right, thank you. Any council comments? Lance?
Yeah, two things. I see that the, the trail connections that you have, where, how does this tie into the VLO web, or does it?
That would be this one that's up here on the north side.
What, fifteen?
Fifteen. So they're both labeled fifteens, like future trails.
Okay, so that's going north, what about south?
Not, not fifteen, though. Fifteen is not the VLO web. That'll, that's the connection to the Spring Meadow and the SFR. Eleven, kind of the, Spencer, if I'm right, and Ryan, feel free to come up too, I know you were a part of this discussion, kind of that road, that kind of service road, if you will, is kind of a shared space behind the park. Oh, sorry, there's the other fifteen. There's, they're both fifteen.
Yeah, there's both labeled fifteen, sorry.
I'm going to turn this mic off. Why don't you take it from here?
Where the roundabout is, where the current crossing of the railroad is.
Sure, sure. I guess the question, the question comes in, is so that, that lower fifteen right there at sixty-six and Crawford, right?
Yes, sir.
Where you go back up into the neighborhood, the question is, is now how do you head sort of southwest to tie into Lafayette Crossing and the VLO web to further extend that down so that you get the connection back into Rockwell?
So Lance, we identified a path in the sidewalk and trails connectivity plan to make sure that we can connect Lafayette Crossing to the downtown. And it's primarily through some opportunities along the railroad right-of-way, basically immediately adjacent and parallel to that. And ultimately, we'd like to coordinate something with Roy City to continue to work east and connect downtown Roy City in the long term. But there's an immediate opportunity to connect Lafayette Crossing, which is on the hook to construct about a mile of the VLO web.
Right.
Through the, through those adjacent downtown properties, or adjacent to those downtown properties into this downtown park.
So you're not necessarily seeing that run, run down the railroad line?
Not within the railroad. The railroad will let us do it, but adjacent to it, there's right-of-way.
Okay.
And some easement areas that we can work within.
Okay. The other, the other question I had, when you get to the container parts, looked like you had some two-story stacks, right? How do you deal with the disability?
So currently, what that is, is where we're showing that is more of the opportunity for massing. When I say massing, it's like your pedestrian interaction will still be ground level. The massing is just, maybe it's just a container tied to it up there that would be, create more of that visual element.
So purely for looks?
Purely for looks.
Empty.
And aesthetic.
Basically, thanks.
Mark?
How handicapped accessible is the park going to be, would you say?
I would say completely handicap. I mean, that's, for anything that we're, by law, we're required to make everything.
On that, I mean, there's ADA compliant, and then there's, if you talk to ADA, there's actually, you can go up above and beyond on their, their kind of minimum guidelines. So you anticipate the, the park being able to be accessed by people who have difficulty walking and wheelchairs and things like that. Also, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to, I was going to run back through, I can get into a little bit more detail here. So one of the things with the gray, there is a, a fall across this towards the railroad track. So one of the things we're looking at is making this entire container and the anchor tenants on a more level plane. And then it would tier down into number nineteen. And that whole section, we would create an accessible path all the way across. And then number three is an accessible surface that would be, you can walk east-west, or you can take over here towards Sauce and Vine. But yes, this whole thing would be tied together as a complete accessible space.
And parking might be a lot closer where they can actually have access to it, handicap parking and things like that. The other one is how, how involved have you made the, the food hall business owners in designing this, in getting their input?
So they were part of that stakeholder meeting that we had, the, the main tenants, which was the, the smoke barbecue. And Mama Rita's, I think, were the two, the two major like mainstays there. There was others that are more hit and miss, I think, as far as, not maybe hit and miss, but just aren't permanent, always there. They may be there frequently, but not always there. So those two were big players in the discussions amongst others. And that's kind of where we came up with talking about making these spaces for the anchor tenants, you know, space similar to this, this scene in the picture here.
Okay, thank you.
Alan?
Yeah, so the, the container park for the, the permanent people there, is there any kind of shade structure over that, or is it just wide open?
Right now, it's wide, but I, there's an opportunity. So if you wanted to do any kind of maybe sage shells or a...
Something.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just need, need to have something there where, where people are going to be, you know, ordering, getting food, hanging out, and stuff like that. I saw you had a shade structure over by Sauce and Vine, and if you could go back to the big, the big map, number ten?
Number ten.
You know, I think something along those lines, over, around, something where the food hall patrons could have a place to get out of, get out of the elements. Any, any thought into alternative places for parking for the, you know, micro-transportation, golf carts of that nature? Would be an interesting, figure out a place to have, someplace that only golf carts can get to to park and be out of, that way we're not taking up, you know, car, car lots, car spots with, with golf carts.
So are you seeing...
We, we have a golf court ordinance where we, we're allowed, people can come from Spring Meadow and Wood Creek and other areas into downtown. They can't get from thirty to here, but, you know, there's, there should, it'd be nice to be able to reserve automobile parking for automobiles and have a place that golf carts can easily get into and, and park. Whether that's down like fourteen or eleven, the, the service road, I don't know if that's allowed or not, or if it could be made, the bollards could be made so that people could get through them or not. And then, yeah, the, the connection, trail connection to Wood Creek to the west and Spring Meadow to the north is, is critical, as well as the older Spring Meadow down Fate Main. Making sure that we can get people in and out without using cars would be great. And then that was Fate State, Fate Grocery Parking, talked about, that's going to be critical too, especially for our bigger events, so, you know, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Scott, anything?
I just, just want to emphasize the, the, as it relates to the truck yard part of it, the, the majority, the majority of the park looks great. It all looks great. I'm impressed with the look and feel of it, and I think it could be a really cool place. But as it relates to our partners in the food hall, shade, but also air movement, creating ways to move air so that when you're under a shade structure, it's still a hundred degrees outside, it's still a hundred degrees. So anything to create a more year-round environment outside of the structures, because we've got a couple of phenomenal trucks down there that could be doing significantly more i- if their businesses were really a three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day type opportunity to where when it gets a hundred degrees, people are still able to go and, and be comfortable. So, so anything that promotes air movement, cooling, the whatnot, shade, whatever, that'll help that out, I, I think is, as it relates to that part of it, if we're going to do that there, let's do it in a way that's going to benefit everybody and allow those businesses to grow from where they are today.
Understood, thank you.
Mark?
Okay, so fifteen south, is that going into the, that gated community that goes there? Is that, is that the one that goes directly into gated community? So if, and if so, how are others supposed to use that if that's a gated community?
So, in this...
Steve's coming up too, to help aid you.
Is it?
Okay.
So that trail goes behind the SFR project.
Okay.
And connects to Mud Seven.
Okay, all right. So it doesn't go, okay, that's cool. And then this...
Remember that they donated some land with that project? We completed the trail with that project. Now we just need to connect it across the tracks into downtown.
Okay, thank you. And then the second part is, I saw for, or I heard you say for number three that that's going to be turf, and I got a couple of concerns about that. In Texas, astroturf is very hot in the summertime, extremely hot. Second of all, it doesn't last forever, and it's very expensive to replace. And there's also the problem of pet waste. If somebody decides to let their pets go on the astroturf, and there's not someone there to wash it off or whatever, then that's going to remain, and people are going to go sit with their families and that. So although it's nice, I, I'm not sure how, how good it is for, for a Texas environment where it's open basically to the sun. That's, that's my own concern. I think everything else looks great. I just look forward to having it in our city.
Cody?
So I love the shade container plaza. I think those look really nifty. But we are in Texas, and so there were other comments about air movement. Are there plans to make those be wired for electric so that there can be fans in the summer and heaters in the winter?
Yes, that is the plan. So I think you're going to have two opportunities here. You'll have their serving space like a traditional food truck. So those would have to be, you know, when I talk, spoke of the mechanical needs and sewer needs that'll be required of those facilities, that would be it, which would probably be AC and heat. The other opportunity would be, you know, incorporating something along the lines of this scenario here into those anchor units. And those, I think you can incorporate the heating and cooling opportunities there fairly easily, along with the additional comments that the gentleman had about just creating in those plaza spaces more just shade in general.
Sure.
For those areas.
That's all I got.
Yes, Scott, I think just a couple, kind of, a couple more comments. One, you've got to, you've got to deal with the heat issues clearly, across the whole park, existing play structures, you want to take a step back and really do that. Second thing, I think, when we start to talk about, the state is going to start pushing really hard for recycling of water. Agriculture Commissioners of Texas has been clear about our water needs. Since this is going to take a long time to do, you really got to think hard about recycling the water. Use turf like Service Center does and heat, but does not get really hot, to replace the grass. Because as Sid Miller gets his way and the, and the governor starts saying, we got to save water, this is how we do that, and since it's going to take five years to do that, I'm convinced you're going to see mandates for this the next session, this session. So you've got to think about it now, right? About heating, about the heat across the whole thing, okay? So you've got to think about that. The other thing, I would highly, strongly recommend, we start the design sooner than later in this budget cycle. The rules are going to change on what councils can and cannot do. There, those items will pass. It'll be a lot harder to get anything done. I would start, if you have the money, this, start now. But this has been three years in the making, something like that four, and we're here. It feels too slow to me. We need, we need to speed this up, we need to get it done. Downtown's been this way for a really long time, and the citizens, I think, really went this time. When Sauce and Vine opens, we should have a nice park, food hall should have been moved a while ago. So we got to think about getting the design started now with this budget, the council has to figure it out, this council next has got to figure that out. By September, the rules change, and it won't be in our favor. It will be harder, right? So that's my comments on that, so appreciate that. Any comments from the public? Yes? Hey, just, microphone, please.
So just looking at all of it too, considering lighting being that it's going to be next to the railroad, and we're starting to have the teenagers and all of that, I just worry about in nighttime, like them gathering and not having enough lighting over there. So I just want to make sure that that's in the consideration, making sure it's well-lit.
Is your concern more of the, the park portion?
Yeah, because I think the kids are going to go to gather and, and hang out, and that's the idea, but just safety concerns of them like running up and testing the limits with the railroad.
Okay, yeah. And I will point out, there is a fence along that entirety there that separates the city property from the railroad property, which, and then that secondary is an electrical easement, not, you have the railroad easement and then the, so you have that, and, but I do agree with proper lighting in both of these spaces.
It's just dark and you can't see anything.
Right. You don't want any place where somebody can hide.
Right, absolutely. All right. All right, any comments from the public? Okay, you guys like to talk? Nope? All right, Sam, yes, please. Up there, please, yeah.
Maybe just to address a couple of concerns. Rob Haley, I'm from Rowlett. My son... Uh, my son owns the, um, barbecue place, Smoke Town Barbecue. And I just wanted to address, uh, your, your comment about the, uh, containers. We have a couple of containers, uh, Mama Rita's, and we have a couple of containers out there. And they are, like he said, spray foamed on the inside, air-conditioned. And you could put a couple of them together, uh, which is kind of part of their concept. Put a cou- a couple of them together and you have indoor restaurant, uh, seating. Uh, uh, pretty much 70 degrees, 60 degrees. You can maintain the, uh, the air there and, and that's just with a windy unit that we have currently. We're using, uh, one of them for storage currently. So it's heating and cooled in the summer and, and the winter and it's very comfortable. There was one other item I was going to say, oh, as far as the stacking of the containers. Uh, even though he said that they could mask, those could be used for storage for the owners as well. You use something to where you could have a little staircase up there and maybe store supplies and, and keep a footprint, possibly a little bit tighter. So, uh, thank you, that's all I had and good job.
Alright, thank you, thank you so much, appreciate it. Anybody else?
One, one more thing. Stephen, you talked about phasing and funding. If there is going to be phasing, um, phase one, phase two, phase three, then the food hall should be phase one and get it done as soon as possible. Um, we need to, you know, the, the plot that they're on right now is, as things start to develop, especially along I-30 with what we just got done, the people are going to be looking for, for land. And it could be a high, high commodity for us. So we need to make sure that we have not reactive, but being proactive with our food hall people and get them over there as quickly as possible.
Yep, I echo that. Alright, anybody else? Any more public comment? Alright, seeing none. Thank you so much, appreciate your help and time and effort, thinking of the park board, next please.
Okay, next will be item 10, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board adjournment.
Okay, Stephanie, got it.
Alright, thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn our meeting at 8:02?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
And a second?
A second.
Thank you. Alright, all in favor of adjourning our portion of the meeting?
Aye.
A majority, so no need to further vote. We are initially adjourned.
Thank you, and for the record, it's 8:02 PM.
Perfect, thank you so much, next please.
Okay, and next will be item 11, Fayette MDD Board of Directors adjournment.
I'll take a motion for adjournment. I have a motion, do I have a second? Alright, I have a second. All in favor of adjourning the Fayette Municipal Development District Board One meeting at 8:02? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, motion passed, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Next please.
Okay, next will be agenda item, uh, number 14, Mayor Council and City Manager Reports.
Alright, Cody?
Just wanted to thank everybody for coming out today. There was, um, a lot of you that came and spoke and gave feedback and we always appreciate that, so thank you very much.
Mr. Harper? Yes, I would like to, uh, thank, um, those who came out, just like Cody said. But I also want to thank CASA and, uh, the other places. Unfortunately, we need those people in our life. Hopefully someday we don't need that and there won't be any child abuse. But until then, those, uh, organizations are, are a great asset to the city and, and I'm glad we can, uh, partake in helping them, so. And, uh, voting coming soon, everybody get out and vote. And that's it. Mr. Kelly?
Uh, yes, early voting starts next week. Um, we've got a good slate of candidates, so I would encourage everybody to get to know them if you haven't yet. Um, I've had the pleasure of meeting with most of them. And, um, a- and I, I, I think whoever's elected will do what's best for Fayette. Um, I want to give a special shout out to Matt, to Ryan and to Stephen for the work they put in on Project Cactus. Um, I know there's a lot of consternation as it relates to Lafayette Crossing development in general, and I get that. But developments like that get approved because of deals like this. And it's deals like this that are going to provide significant long-term benefit to the city. Um, sustainable, long-term development to the city. And it's going to bring people in that are going to help our other smaller businesses like the food hall. It's going to bring a lot of people into the city that would not normally be here. So, um, special shout out to those guys and the amount of work they've put in over the last couple of months to get this to the finish line.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes, thank you Matt and your team for, for all your hard work on this. It's, uh, it's going to be a great addition of the city of Fayette. Um, Child Abuse Awareness Month, Lone Star CASA, um, CAC, Rainbow Room, Meals on Wheels. You go down the list of, of things that have direct impact for the residents of Fayette or the areas that, uh, the city gives, um, assist with, um, mon- monetarily. Um, there's been a lot of talk about openness and transparency from our candidates and things like that. And, uh, we are open and transparent with everything. Um, a lot of times, people just don't be engaged. And I, and I would encourage everyone to be engaged and ask the questions about how we contribute, how we benefit, how economic development works, how roads are made. Um, you know, Facebook is, is not necessarily the, the best place for all information. Um, so I encourage every y'all to reach out to council, to staff, to anybody, you know, to help, help answer the questions that you do have. Um, thank you all for being here tonight, it was a great evening.
Hey, Mr. Ratley?
Uh, I'd like to thank Matt for his presentation and Brian and Stephen for the work you guys did on the, uh, Project Cactus. Uh, I'd like to thank the MDD Board and the Parks Board for, for everything you guys do. We don't get to see you often, so, uh, but, uh, thank you for all that you guys do. Uh, as always, I want to thank the DPS, uh, for everything they do and the city staff for everything you guys, uh, do as well. Um, uh, talk about transparency up here, I mean, uh, transparency is a good thing. Uh, we can always do better. Uh, doesn't mean we're doing necessarily bad, but there's anything, there's always room for improvement and I don't care where that is. Uh, look and see if, if there is any, you know, uh, gaps in anything, work on and go fix them. Uh, that's my, that's my opinion. But, uh, I wanted to thank everybody for being here, thank you.
Okay, Lance?
Uh, thank you to city staff. City don't run without your help, right? And Matt, putting that deal together, top-notch, appreciate it. I think that's going to be a great, a great economic boon to the city. Uh, it's something that we were anticipating when we first put in Lafayette Crossing and started thinking about it. But having it done three years ahead of time, great job, thank you.
Alright, I will go, thank you Matt, you did a great job on the presentation. I know the staff worked really hard on this for a really long time and I do really appreciate it. Um, this is a great project going forward. I, um, appreciate CAC and all the nonprofit organization that came tonight. Um, one fact was not mentioned tonight was about one in 10, or about nine child abuse cases out of 10 are not reported in Rockwell County. Uh, so their mission is critical, that's why we do the Gold Blue. It's very important, I know we don't want to talk about it, but it is a critical service they provide to us. And I really do appreciate all of them. They did a really great job and they have a really hard job to do. I'm sure I appreciate that and, um, DPS is always, you guys, great, great work for job. Michael, thank you for what you guys have done for us. Uh, it was a great presentation. So, sir, you're next.
Alright, so we talked about, um, Good Friday already, Sunday's Easter, the, um, some different things going on. The 26th of this month, Saturday, we have a community cleanup, so a volunteer effort, go clean out different, different parts around the city. There's also on the 21st through the 24th, there is a community cleanup, a different kind. Where you bring all your stuff to the, um, to the old treatment plant that you want to get rid of, junk, of course. Um, and then we've got the, um, on the 28th of April, we have a joint meeting with Royce City Independent School District at the High School Event Center. And then, of course, I think someone already mentioned it, but the early voting begins on April 22nd. And then, of course, we have, uh, Election Day on May 3rd.
Alright, next please.
Okay, next will be agenda item 15, Executive Session. The city council will recess into closed meeting to discuss the following. A, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property. One, elevated water tower number three. And B, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, to deliberate regarding personnel. And those items are one, City Manager and two, City Secretary.
I'll take it into Executive Session at 8:09, please, thank you so much.
All right, next please.
Okay, item 16, no action will be taken on items discussed in executive session. So, agenda item 17 is city council adjournment.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All right, please vote. Did he?
I knew it.
Somebody abstained.
Motion passes six to one with Councilman Kelly abstaining again. Thank you all.
He doesn't want to go.
He doesn't want to go.